Leading straight into bushfires, having a flood, having other issues we've had to deal with day to day and then COVID-19. It has been quite an extraordinary year for us. The resilience of the public service has been on show. How everyone has had to tilt with their service delivery to continue serving the eight million people of the state has been quite exceptional. And I wanted to acknowledge that hard work, that tremendous dedication to the people of New South Wales.
Thanks, Mr. Redden. Ms. Foye, is that speaking on behalf of both of you?
That is certainly speaking on behalf of...
Thanks. I'll now hand over to the opposition.
Great. Thanks for your appearance today. I might, I'll turn to the arts section shortly. I just, obviously, the arts and entertainment cultural sector is both the publicly funded and the privately funded bit. I might start by just asking about the governance arrangements for the nighttime economy focus. We've got the former chair of the committee here, and I think committee members would be interested just in the, some changes which have occurred with how the nighttime economy agenda has been driven in government. It's slightly opaque from outside the executive. If you could just, either of you were able to describe.
Is this a question with Lee, is it?
Attention.
So I apologize, I think I have to take that on notice. I haven't come prepared for that. You know, I can make some general comments, but I'll take on notice. Do you have a specific question or questions about it?
I'm interested in, well, I might ask the specific question about what is Create's role in that now. Because previously, it was the agency driving it. Now that has migrated somewhat.
Yeah, so Create certainly continues to play a role and arts and culture continue to play a role in supporting the nighttime economy. I'm afraid I'll have to take quite a bit of the detail on notice if that's okay, but very happy to come back with that. But Create certainly participates in the relevant committees that are there. And our executive director, the head of Create, is, takes the lead.
I'll make a general comment, Mr. Graham, around COVID and during COVID. So as Mrs. Shebridge pointed out, a lot of the cultural institutions have obviously had to close down through the public health orders, you know, Australia-wide, but certainly even New South Wales as well. What the entire public service has been doing is watching what we've been doing very carefully and making sure we collect information as we go on pretty much everything and having to go through as much detail as we can. So what's happening on the transport network and what we've had to do to social distance on that, these are extraordinary outcomes. So peak spreading has been the mantra of anyone who works in a transport agency around the world to spread the peak of, to avoid congestion. It's happened by default within the health system, the amount of virtual healthcare that you would have heard about in previous hearings, I'm sure, about the amount of telehealth. So the tilt across the board has been quite exceptional. The same with the nighttime economy whilst we've been in shutdown, but as we come back out and how we get to a new normal. And I'm sure you've heard the term new normal endlessly. I think we're at peak new normal in terms of using that term. But how it emerges for the 24-hour economy in New South Wales and indeed in the thriving metropolis, Sydney, Newcastle, Wollongong and other places. There's a real opportunity to examine how people have changed their social behaviour. The amount of people who are, who have been first forced to work from home means a massively different dynamic in the CBD areas. And I don't just mean this eastern CBD, I mean the central River City and the Western City and many other areas in the state. Things have changed so markedly that we just need to make sure that we measure and collect data as we go to see what the demand will be 24/7 for the nighttime economy. I imagine it's a fairly significant opportunity. Might flatten out demand, but we are just simply in a period where we're responding to the pandemic. But as we recover, the other thing we're doing is looking at those areas of reform. And I mean reform in how the economy reforms itself.
Given Ms. Foye's answer perhaps on notice, if you're able to set out the governance.
The governance specifically, so the roles of Create and other agencies, absolutely.
Given they have changed. I might turn to the most significant funding commitment by Create in this period, the $50 million commitment. This is, was unusual originally because there weren't sort of guidelines set out about how this would apply. Where are we up to? How is this going to be implemented? Have guidelines been issued?
Sure. If I might just be able to set out the kind of economic context and the impact of COVID on the sector as a leading to just talking about some of the detail around the package. So the sector normally has, supports about 118,000 jobs in New South Wales, contributing about 16.4 billion directly and indirectly to gross state product here in New South Wales. As far as the impact of COVID on the, on the sector, the ABS, so the Australian Bureau of Statistics Survey in March, showed that about 50% of the arts and recreation businesses had ceased trading, which is the highest proportion of about 17 industries analysed, with a 27% decline in arts and recreations jobs from the period of mid-March to mid-April. Certainly accommodation and food declined at a faster, a greater rate. The, we looked at and had been working fairly early on with the arts sector. We had to firstly with the cultural institutions in New South Wales, so the state cultural institutions of Australian, of the Australian Museum, which was already closed, Sydney Opera House, Powerhouse, State Library, New South Wales Art Gallery and Sydney Living Museums, all closing in March. And then we've been working on their reopening from the 1st of June. Clearly reopening the sector is a support for jobs, but notwithstanding, we have 11 major companies in here in New South Wales, ranging from the Australian Ballet, Sydney Theatre Company, Brandenburg Orchestra, et cetera. So we, we know that many of those major companies, as well as smaller companies in galleries, museums and performing arts.
Turn to the guidelines. Are there guidelines for this programme?
There are guidelines. So there are three, there are three broad criteria for, for the arts and culture package. So I'll just turn to my notes to make sure I'm accurate. So at first there was 6.34 million dollars in COVID-related support, which was a re, a re... Sorry, it is part of the context. So that's in redirected funds to be able to support companies. $50 million for new funds in, for the Arts Rescue and Restart Package announced on the 24th of May. It's the, certainly the largest package across the country and we acknowledge the federal government's support in recent weeks. The package is certainly critical to supporting the economic recovery of those companies in the state. So it's divided into two stages, roughly half or around half, funding available now for those New South Wales companies needing to hibernate temporarily, so to keeping them alive. And the second is around the restart.
Or is it more broad than that?
I beg your pardon?
Is that for the 11 major companies or is it more about that?
It's broader than that. The criteria for funding are that they are a not-for-profit organisation, that they're based here in New South Wales, they're an arts and culture organisation, they're in clear financial distress and that financial distress is as a result of COVID. The applications are assessed on a case-by-case basis. We have a staged process of assessing those applications and they're quickly coming in. I think we have about 55 under assessment at the moment.
Have any been issued already?
We're still in the process of analysing, analysing the, the package and analysing the applications.
How soon before you think funds will be issued from that?
So we're undertaking the analysis and we'll submit that. So the analysis is being done, a triage by Create to make sure they comply with those criteria. We've engaged Price Waterhouse Coopers to undertake an independent financial analysis and Treasury provides analysis. We then put that analysis to, to the Premier for ultimately the Premier to make a decision. And the timing of any announcements would be made in due course.
But how, obviously that depends on the process you're running, how soon before you think funds might flow.
That would be, that would be a matter for the Premier to decide based on our analysis. I don't have a timetable on that.
How, how long do you think it'll be before you have that in front of the Premier, having done that analysis?
The analysis is underway and we'll have that up to the Premier as soon as we, as soon as that is completed.
I mean, the largest part of it has been about from the, the day of announcement until now has not been, it, it has been getting engagement with the sector itself.
Which is obviously quite diverse, yeah.
And them coming forward, giving, giving us the appropriate information, the assessment itself, Treasury, Treasury, Price Waterhouse and, and Create will move quite fast. So I can only add to Ms. Foye's comments to say we're moving that as quickly as we can.
And does that mean weeks or months? What do we?
I, I think it'll be, our assessment will be done quite quickly and be put forward to, to government when government decides to announce it will be for them, but our work will be done fairly quickly.
So it sounds like weeks, is that, but I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, I, I'll just let it be done fairly quickly and I'm confident we've got the crew together to actually move that really quickly. Ms. Foye and I have been working on that in the last few days and communicating about it, so it's top of mind.
I think you're indicating that about 25 million is in this rest, this, this hibernate part of this and then the rest is for actually restarting and recovering.
And I should, if I may point out, the level of engagement, communication and collaboration with the sector has been outstanding. And I do want to acknowledge the leaders in the sector who have worked so well with us. It's worth putting on record that we have, we have worked quite closely, particularly in the last couple of months. So our first discussion with the sector was on the 17th.
I've only got one more question, so.
Of course. Yeah, I'll make a very quick note.
Can we just, can we just go back to that normal concept of question and answer as opposed to overlapping conversation?
I might hand to my colleague.
Good, excellent.
But Ms. Foye, how do you finish?
I, I just wanted to indicate that we have had a number of formal engagements with the sector. We have, very grateful to our colleagues at Health who have been part of the conversation along every step of the way. And just for the record, in terms of the consultation formally with quite large groups and chief executives and parts of the sector, 17th of March, we worked, was our initial discussions before the closures happened, 17th of April with our CEOs, the 29th of May, where we had a conversation with Health and the sector around the reopening of galleries and museums. The 12th of June, we had a major arts roundtable to talk about the arts package.
Ms. Foye, I might just stop you there and if you wanted to provide anything more on notice.
We're up to the 29th of June, so I, I think, let's just finish this.
Yeah, just the 29th of June, talking about live performance. So very, very pleased with that. Sorry, Mrs. Shebridge.
No, that's fine, Mr. Redden. This might be a question for you. Given the Berwick-Edelman government has talked about the importance of proceeding with large projects to counteract the economic impact of COVID-19 and given the green band that was announced today, what's the next step for the Powerhouse project and parameter?
Well, I'll take the point of order. Look, um, the, the point of order goes to whether this, this style of questioning, which I anticipated might come, can be fitted into a, a COVID inquiry. Now, the Powerhouse is a project that well and truly existed before, beforehand and there's a separate inquiry that's looking at it. So I just ask Chair that questions be directed to the terms of reference as opposed to simply because we've got unofficial before the inquiry.
To the point of order, Mr. Chair, while what Mr. Khan says is correct.
It is, yeah.
Well, yes, but the government has indicated that, you know, all options in relation to proposed and existing expenditure are under review in terms of how it responds to the COVID situation. So that puts, I think, the Powerhouse and indeed other existing projects into the frame for this inquiry.
Well, indeed, that's not correct.
So, so I can, I can deal with the point of order now. I, I think the point is this, this is a COVID-19 oversight inquiry. So I, I really can't make a ruling on this first question and I'm sure the member will make it relevant to COVID-19. So I'll allow the question in to go for something.
Yeah, well, look, I, I put the stake in the ground so that everyone is alive to the issue because I think otherwise. And look, can I just say that the position with the Powerhouse is contrary to what the Honourable Adam Sewell has said. The position has been made.
But I, but I don't, I don't need to hear it anymore at this stage. I think I understand the point and I have made a ruling. Unless there's a fresh point of order, I'm going to go back to the question.
I just add at this point in the proceedings that there is a separate inquiry into that issue using the parliamentary resources. So this is a separate inquiry to that.
Which, which anyhow, I've made the ruling, the question's been asked.
Sorry?
The Chair has ruled that my question is still up.
I think it might be useful to restate the question.
So given the Berwick-Edelman government has stated the increased importance of proceeding with large projects to counteract the economic impact of COVID-19, given the green band announcement today, what is the next step that the government will be taking in the Powerhouse project?
So just a few things. On the first statement you made about the government's importance of major projects, as in large projects, I think I'd correct that and say all projects. The government has increased the four-year forward estimates, infrastructure pipeline to $100 billion now. In that is a significant number of very large major projects, many of which you, you know, in terms of metro lines, motorways, major cultural institutions, dams and other water infrastructure, both in metro and certainly significant in regional, hospitals, schools, amongst many others. There are a significant number of those that are actually quite small as well. And those small ones are the shovel-ready ones and sometimes the screwdriver-ready ones, in using that terminology, to get going as fast as possible. So the response to COVID, to, for the relevance of, of this hearing is that both very large and that are underway, but a significant number of very small projects are part of the economic recovery activity to grow significant numbers of jobs. The multiplier effect in the construction industry is, I think, close to 10 jobs for every job that's created. So that multiplier effect is top of mind to ensure that we drive growth. For a period there, we, like other jurisdictions, had a look at the construction sector to determine COVID-safe arrangements to keep working through work, health and safety. And we did that and we did that nice and early. We took lots of advice off Health and acknowledged the Chief Health Officer for her great assistance, Kerrie Chan, in that because other jurisdictions closed down their construction sector, which is...
So, Mr. Redden, can I bring you to the question of the Powerhouse project of what is the next step in that?
The, sorry, I was answering, responding to your question. So the, the major projects such as the Powerhouse, unlike any others, are in a process. The Powerhouse is currently up to an environmental impact statement and consultation around that. It continues along its course. In terms of the, your third part about the green band, you'll have to restate that to me because I've apologised. I've been in other meetings all morning, so I don't know what the latest comments are on that. I haven't followed it. So if you wouldn't mind giving me a little bit more detail on it.
There was a green band yesterday, announced by the Construction Union.
Yep, and the question was around the green band this morning, so, so it was...
Well, it was reported this morning as well as yesterday.
Just what was from yesterday. I've read the reports, the same as you have. As I said, we have quite literally hundreds and hundreds of projects and every single one of those projects, there are issues arising. That's what project managers and project directors have to deal with. If there's a green band by an industry organisation on a project, we'll have to deal with that on its, on its merits as it, as it comes up. I'm not across a detail, happy to take it on notice if I need to, but I'm just not across a detail.
If you could provide any more detail on notice, that would be helpful. Is the Powerhouse Museum on the list of fast-track projects from the government?
The Powerhouse Museum is on the list of many projects. In terms of fast-track, if anyone from the government was here, they would say they're all on the fast-track because that's what they expect of us, to deliver them as, as fast as possible. Is it a project that has to be driven in the $100 billion infrastructure pipeline? Absolutely. That's what we have to deliver. Its timelines are set out to push those projects as fast as possible. We'll do anything we can to ensure that we look at faster planning determinations, which planning industry and environment, I believe, have given evidence here about moving those processes as efficiently as possible. Working with heritage, working with other areas within government that can help us use the response to COVID to try and take any red tape out of the system we need to, while adhering to every rule and act and piece of regulation we need to, working with the Commonwealth faster.
Is there a change to the construction programme as a result of COVID?
Not at this point in time in terms of the Powerhouse, but you asked me, is it on a fast-track list? They're all on a fast-track list. There's no differentiation to say that three will be brought forward right now, unless government tells us to, to reprioritise, but at the moment, we're just getting on with the infrastructure pipeline that we have.
Okay, Mr. Redden, I understand that you're obviously the Secretary of the Department, but I'm, I'm interested to know whether you can provide any information for us if, whether there was a discussion about whether the $1.5 billion from the Powerhouse could be better spent or redirected to other parts of art, of the arts and cultural sector or artists who are struggling through COVID.
So the infrastructure pipeline and any prioritisation, officials can bring forward the infrastructure pipeline, mainly through infrastructure in New South Wales and Treasury from time to time. Government can make its own decisions on that pipeline. I'm not aware of the question that you've asked.
Okay. I wanted to turn to the question of workers who are currently working at the Powerhouse Museum and this has received some media coverage, that 95 workers are actually going to be sacked at this point. Are there any moves underway to redirect them, to re-employ them, to find them alternative work? Obviously, in the midst of an economic crisis, we don't want to be sacking anyone, in particular, public sector workers.
So a broad comment first and then I'll hand over to Ms. Foye. So we've worked very hard to ensure that we retain as much employment as possible and I think we've done that. We will work anywhere we can to ensure that we retain jobs for the obvious economic fallout that has been Jobseeker, Jobkeeper and the hundreds of thousands of people who have been stood down. What we read in the media every other day in the private sector right now, which is 85 to 90% of the workforce in this state, there are significant job losses and we're well aware of that. In terms of people at the, the Powerhouse, I would more generally tell you that we would look to redeploy where we could if there was a, a job available. I don't think you have to impress upon us the importance of job retention. I don't know, Ms. Foye, if you want to talk about Powerhouse employees?
I haven't, I, I'll talk in the, in general terms first. So firstly, the matter is before the IRC. I understand that that was brought by the relevant union before the Industrial Relations Commission, so I'm not going to go into the detail on that. Firstly, if I could, no one is being sacked from the Powerhouse. The Powerhouse has, like any other, many other organisations, employ casuals for a range of tasks, whether that is to support a particular exhibition, like the linear exhibition or other exhibitions around the place. They are there for a set period of time. My understanding is that there, no one is having their contracts prematurely cancelled, that contracts are being honoured. And obviously where there is a requirement that they sign, people sign a contract with an understanding of start date and an end date, there is budget available for that. And my understanding is those projects being, those, in general terms, those contracts are being honoured. But as I said, it's before the IRC and I'm happy if there's more detailed questions to take those on notice and, and answer them as appropriate.
My time's expired.
Thanks, Ms. Foye. Well, a useful, a useful piece of information would be what the current full-time equivalent headcount is for the Powerhouse today and how does that compare to a year ago?
I'm happy to take that on notice. I haven't got that detail with me today.
In, in relation to the COVID pandemic, not in a budget estimates way?
Well, funny, funny you should ask that. So yes, you'll take that on notice. Ms. Foye, there have been substantial...
Did you want me to take this?
Is there a clarification on that?
No, I just wanted the two figures.
So the two figures being before and after?
What they are now, what the, what the current full-time equivalent headcount is for the Powerhouse and what it was 12 months ago.
As, as best we can, based on the fact that it is a pandemic and how many people have stood down, come back, might be a difficult comparison, but we'll do the best we can.
I understand. Yep. Ms. Foye, there have been, there is significant concern in the community about the fact that large sections of the Powerhouse Museum are walled off. He's, he's, and, and public do not have access to a number of the heritage galleries. Was that a decision made because of the impacts of COVID-19?
If I can, if I can understand your question, so you're asking why there are certain sections walled off at the moment.
The majority of the large exhibits.
The Powerhouse. Look, any, any of the changes with Powerhouse are unrelated to COVID, so, but I'm very happy to answer your question. So the galleries, museums, galleries, everything was closed in March, I believe the 23rd of March, and reopened from the 1st of July. That includes, you know, State Library and the Powerhouse. The Powerhouse has for a while now a planned closure, planned stage closure to allow for a number of activities, including the digitisation of its around $300,000, I thought, of the 300,000 or 400,000 items in its collection. The stage closure, between the 1st of June and the 30th of June, we have had guided tours through the Heritage, the Heritage Core. I went there myself and had a, had a look at it the other day. Those, those tours continue, so people certainly do remain having access to the heritage part, given that there is works going on, given COVID and, and we want to make sure that, you know, there's things that people can touch. So we want to make sure we're operating in a COVID-safe way. We've got the Heritage, Heritage Tours, curated tours by a fantastic team continuing.
Well, I was there myself on Friday, having booked in. And contrary to the position you put, Ms. Foye, the bulk of the large exhibition halls are actually walled off and the public is excluded from access, whether with a tour or otherwise.
That's not contrary to what she said.
So the, 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 the Heritage Hall, most of those large Heritage Halls with the steam engines below, the one with the large aircraft, they're all actually walled off and you can't access them.
I, I might, if I can take that on notice and check it because there may be a reason, a health reason for having parts of it or they may have been walled off for other purposes, but I'm happy to take that detail on notice.
Is it, is, there seems to me, from my, from my attendance there, to be no rational reason to be excluding the public from getting access to these extraordinarily highly valued exhibitions. But you can't identify whether that's for a COVID-19 reason or a business plan reason?
If I could have a, if I could take that on notice, I'm more than happy to come back with a detail on that.
From, from a COVID-19 perspective, clearly as Ms. Foye pointed out at the start, they were subject to shutdown and we've worked with them really closely across all the cultural institutions to reopen as quickly as possible in a COVID-safe way. So we'll take that on notice, but across the board, we're trying to reopen as fast as we can.
It's difficult to understand how a COVID-19 considerations would support reducing the amount of floor space available to separate the public from... to separate the public from, that seems to be, you'd agree, Ms. Foy, directly contrary to any rational response to COVID-19.
She's twice said she will take the question on notice. I don't know where the question is any different from the previous two questions. The question has been taken on notice, Chair.
Well, that, that question has not, and it responds to Mr. Ridden's observations that it's about COVID-19. And I'm asking whether or not the reduction of floor space is at all a rational response to COVID-19, because it provides less space for social distancing.
We'll take that on notice. The, the institution you've just reflected on, mine was more broad, that we would want to get exhibitions open across the board as fast as possible for economic recovery because the arts and culture sector, as Ms. Foy pointed out, is a significant contributor to the economy and jobs.
Indeed. Mr. Ridden, when did the Premier take on the ministerial responsibilities for industrial relations and arts? The, the date I had here was the 10th of April, would that be right?
It's around that time, but I can just take that on notice and I'll have a response for you very quickly.
Yeah, that, that's right. But I think it's, it's around in the, in the first half of April, which is when Minister, then Minister Harwin resigned and the Premier.
Yeah, I'll give you the exact date, that's all.
10 April. How, how many individual ministerial portfolios does the Premier now hold?
Well, I'm going to take the point of order. I'm going to take the point of order, Chair, and I don't know that you can rule on your own question. But I, I was, I was of the belief that I was in, I might be in the wrong room, perhaps I'm new to this, I'm in the wrong place. I thought I was in the inquiry into the government's management of the COVID-19 pandemic, and I'm not sure on any tangential reading how that question can possibly be related to this.
I think it does, I think it has.
I'm not sure, but I'd be interested to know how that assists the people of New South Wales to understand the government's management of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Well, I'll be very clear. Any minister having an extraordinarily large array of ministerial portfolios. Allow, allow, allow me to rule on it. Any minister having a large array of spread portfolios is going to have difficulty finding the time, well, this is what I'm exploring with the witnesses, potentially have difficulty finding the time to devote the necessary ministerial attention, particularly when you have an industry like the arts industry facing such a, such a crisis. So, did you, unless you wanted to wish anything else?
Do you know the amount of energy she has?
Unless you want to add anything else to your point of order, I'm going to rule on it.
Tribes of as-yet undiscovered Puruvian Indians know that you will rule against my point of order.
All right, yes, and I did. How many ministers, how many portfolio responsibilities does the Premier have?
The, the, the answer in its absolute exactness will be in the administration orders, but it brings in heritage, public service, employer relations, arts, portfolios, and if I've missed anything, you'll assist, but the admin orders will make that abundantly clear, and I'll furnish a copy if I can while we're here.
And, Mr. Ridden, Ms. Foy, I don't, I'm not trying to, this isn't a pretend question, I want to be very clear about it.
Sure.
Given the array of responsibilities the Premier has, is, is there a sufficient ministerial attention there to deal with such important issues as the recovery of the art sector, which has all of the economic and cultural importance that you put, Ms. Foy?
Oh, David, that's a rhetorical flourish. How can these, these witnesses genuinely answer otherwise than how you know they're going to answer?
Yeah. Well, well, I suppose it's to you, Mr. Ridden. I mean, how is, how is the Premier's time allocated? I mean, how, how is the Premier's time allocated across the different portfolios? I think that's really the point. How is it allocated with so many portfolios?
So, I believe the answer to when it occurred was the 15th, 1/5 April. I'll stand corrected, otherwise that's the advice that was just given, so on that. How the Premier's time is allocated is really a question for the Premier, and I think you would appreciate that.
I do.
How we deal with things is we bring through community engagement, and we've described you the structure of the agency and the cluster previously. We've brought in community engagement, Kate Foy leads community engagement as Deputy Secretary of that area, has those areas of arts, heritage, public service and employer relations. And, sorry, and Aboriginal affairs, my apologies, I forgot before Aboriginal affairs were one of the most significant components. Those portfolio areas, Ms. Foy puts forward all of her advices across the board in those areas, and we continue to transact business from the department's end, and that business transacts as it has been transacting previously. So, we get through what we need to get through, how the Premier allocates the time to do that. Indeed, whilst dealing with the COVID-19 crisis response and the economic recovery to that, I suppose speaks to a volume of workload, but how she allocates the time is a question for her. All I can tell you at the departmental end in getting on with things at the public service, we transact business that we need to transact to fulfil our outcomes, budget areas and our KPIs as we've done so previously.
All right. And, all right. Ms. Foy, you were talking about the $50 million Arts Fund, and I think you articulated what the first $25 million was for, which is the hibernation fund, if I could call it that.
We, we try not to. We try to talk about economic recovery and growth and not, not being asleep, and I mean that genuinely.
I think I'm using, I thought Ms. Foy used the term hibernation.
I understand. Early, early on, just because of the COVID-19 response hearing, early on, there was a lot of using of the convention of hibernation. We quickly turned it on its heads, at the federal level as well, to say, we don't want to hibernate our economy, we want to bring it back to life as quickly as possible. So, it may have been used, I'm simply saying to you, the essence of the response out of the New South Wales Public Service and economic recovery, we moved away from that as quickly as we could.
Well, well, I'll go back to, Ms. Foy, if you want to clarify. My understanding was, you said, the first $25 million was for those large, those organisations which basically need to go into shutdown for a prolonged period of time. I think you used the word hibernation, I could be wrong.
Yeah, I did, and I apologise if I could restate that.
I think you need to apologise to Mr. Ridden, not to myself, Ms. Foy.
It's nice to talk to you. Never apologise.
So, so we have that first $25 million, the second $25 million.
Yeah, so that's about the, again, it's part of that economic recovery. The first is to keep businesses operating, and the second is then to get, to get that real kickstart in the economy for arts and culture.
So, the criteria for the first $25 million was those companies that I think you said they were not-for-profit, they were New South Wales-based, they were in financial distress, and they, they needed to, to basically hold on during a period where they had no economic activity.
Yeah.
The other $25 million, what's that been directed to?
Look, those criteria apply across both, and certainly the level of financial distress is what we're assessing at the moment. The restart part of the equation, so getting the economy kicked back, we're, we're, we're just receiving applications at the moment, but those criteria remain.
Have you done any analysis about what the likely impact on the, on the arts and the cultural sector will be if the job seeker, if the job keeper payments are withdrawn?
No. No, we are, we, that's, we are working with each of the companies on their own, their own circumstances, and each of them will have different circumstances. Each of them will have a job seeker and job keeper that is part of their financial construct in order to, as part of their operation and operating model. And then they will put forward the assessment of their own financial position based on their own finances, whether or not job keeper and job seeker is part of it, and we'll continue to work with them. That's part of their inputs, it's, it's, it's not a piece of analysis that we're undertaking.
But do you accept that if job keeper is withdrawn from the arts and cultural sector, we're likely to see a whole series of additional agencies and companies?
I'm not sure we're going to speculate on that one. So, just in terms of where we are, we're on the first day of the 2020-21 financial year. Since we, I think, saw your last budget estimates at the start of March, it'd be fair to say that we've been very focused on response of the crisis. We've been quickly tilting to economic recovery. We don't have every answer to every, every component. We've put through so many economic supports at the state level and complementary at the federal level in a whole range of areas. You pointed out that you, it's on matter of public record about the areas we've gone to. That has been a significant amount of work. I think Ms. Foy was saying, basically, working with the institutions at a much more nimble and close-up level. It's not just through a lens of job keeper speculating on what will happen when a job keeper may come to an end in quarter four this year. If, you know, the, the federal government was to hold that, whether it was extended or anything else, we just haven't been able to speculate on. We've rather tried to get very close with each institution, understand their personal circumstances. So, whether it's job seeker, job keeper, any other supports that we have, the $50 million rescue package, all of that in the mix. We've just got some more work to do, Mr. Shubridge, because we've been pretty busy with, as I said, just broader response and then economic recovery, and the response will need to continue for some considerable period of time until there's a vaccine.
Yes, which, which we, we hope for.
But we can't plan on hope just on that. So, hence, with the, with the reopening of some of these institutions with a COVID-safe plan, our total aim is, in their business plan, is to keep them open to a level as best they can get to and maintain that without having too much volatility in that. If that puts more people back into jobs that have been stood down from job keeper or have been let go through a job seeker, well and good, that's what we're focused our time on.
Ms. Foy, the, the Carriage Works came very, very close to permanent closure. Do you have any update on the situation for the Carriage Works?
The update is the same as it has been, and any statements in recent weeks. The, I, I should say that the Carriage Works, while COVID had an accelerant effect, it wasn't the root cause. We are very committed and remain committed to the presence of Carriage Works in its current location. We remain very committed to it being a cultural institution that provides for a range of arts and culture offerings. We have been working for weeks, if not months now, with the, both the board and in more recent times with the administrator, KPMG, to work on what is a sustainable business model and financial plan for Carriage Works so that it can continue to maintain its, its presence and continue to play a role in, in its current location.
All right, do you have a timeline, timeline for that?
That's a matter for the administrator. That's honestly, it's a matter for the administrator, but we continue to work with them.
Mr. Ridden, the ACT government has established a Jobs for Camberons Fund, which is in response to COVID-19, and it's designed expressly to provide employment opportunities for people in casual or the semi-skilled workforce who have lost their jobs or been significantly impacted due to COVID-19. Are there plans for New South Wales to mirror this programme?
Well, again, I renew my objection. This is not budget estimates, this is not relevant to the arts portfolio or the industrial relations portfolio. It's not even got a pretence of trying to be relevant to either of those.
To, to the point of order, it's highly relevant. The question was as a response to the COVID pandemic, employment of people does touch on industrial relations, and I don't know, there was an arts component in the Canberra version, but it might well have been.
Yes, I don't pretend it's arts, it's clearly related to IR and COVID, and I think the question is clearly related to IR and COVID.
Yeah, I, I don't have any advice and don't know the structure of the programme in the, that the ACT government has put out there. What the New South Wales government does at a, at a policy level is probably not for me to answer, because where we go to, all I can tell you is the supports that have gone out there have gone directly into getting people back into jobs through infrastructure, through arts and culture that we've talked about here. Arts and culture, I think, as I said at the start, the significance of this, this sector and the response we've had with the $50 million rescue package is, I think it's been, been brought more to light through COVID, the absolute importance of it to our culture and our society, but the significant numbers of, numbers of jobs economically requires our support. The government has allocated monies across many, many areas to support business, small business, to support the construction sector by putting the infrastructure pipeline out there so people can actually flow into jobs.
But my, my question, Mr. Ridden, was about the direct employment of casual and semi-skilled workforce, who are the ones who have been most, who have been hardest here, if there's a programme directed at that.
So, I'm not aware of any, I'm not aware of the programme in the ACT. I'm not aware of any programme that would be equivalent to that in New South Wales, because I'm not aware of the ACT programme. If there's anything further, I can take it on notice, but matters like that will be matters of policy for the government.
All right. Mr. Ridden, one of the very real concerns in a pandemic is people going to work when they're sick. And one of the reasons people might be pressured to go to work when they're sick is because they don't have sick leave, especially casual workers. The Victorian government has announced a hardship payment for workers to provide sick leave in those circumstances. Are there any, are there any moves afoot to provide the same protections in New South Wales?
So, for the New South Wales Public Service, certainly we've put in place some significant sort of memoranda out to the, the public service during March and, and early April. They were around just working from home, they were around flexible work, being very, very reasonable to, to people. We provided clear direction on travel and restrictions on travel, probably even at the same time or if not earlier than broader national cabinet was making decisions on, on restrictions. We provided quite considerable information on what we expected in terms of leave provisions. Probably the key one that we had for the committee is we provided up to 20 days special leave to try and be somewhat of a catch-all. From where I sit, and most of the feedback I receive, the level of sick leave, for example, that we've had has been lower or similar levels than it's been in previous years. But that special leave has taken a lot of stress off a lot of people so they can actually get on with caring, get on with working from home, particularly in those few months where they probably had kids at home, many, many people, and it has taken a lot of stress and load out. Us doing that early and getting it out to the public service early really helped us, I think, by helping the 400,000 people across the board.
Okay, well, I think I'll, we'll come back to this later, back to the opposition.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ridden and Ms. Foy, for coming along today. Just to pick up where Ms. Husos was going in terms of the casuals employed in the Powerhouse. Now, across Australia, something like 1.9, 1.1 million casuals apparently have lost either their whole work or a substantial part of it due to the pandemic. Just mathematically, around 400,000 of those are likely to be in New South Wales. Is it correct to assume that the state government employed or engaged about 70,000 casuals prior to the pandemic? Is that a correct assessment?
I, I will have to take it on notice.
Okay, well, if you can come back.
But I would, as we've discussed a few times, the State of the Sector report out of the Public Service Commission will segment that as much as we need to, so my taking on notice would be to furnish that to you.
Sure, okay, well, the State of, my, my recollection is it said 70,000 casual and contract staff, so if you could see if those figures could be interrogated further, but my, so I'd like you to take that on notice.
I'll furnish you with a copy of the State of the Sector report. What, just asking me to interrogate something further is fairly long.
Well, as the head of the public service, you would be able to know, you'd be able to provide us on notice more than just a publication. You'd be able to tell us prior to the pandemic and now, how many casuals are engaged by various state government sector agencies.
I'll see what I can do, but as head of the public service, there, there are a few things to do, and if it's in there in sufficient detail and segmented, I'll furnish you with the report.
Sure, but you might otherwise be able to find out. In relation to casual employees, because they're so vulnerable, because they don't have to be sacked, as it were, because their employment comes to the end, at the end of a shift, if they're true casuals, they're particularly vulnerable, and that has led in the pandemic, a number of councils, for example, to make a policy decision to keep engaging and paying their casuals according to their usual rostered, you know, work and, and income, to give them some sort of stability and where possible to deploy them. What steps has the state government taken to implement a like policy to ensure that casuals engaged by state agencies continue to receive their regular pay even when they can't do the usual work that they would ordinarily be engaged to do?
I think our response has been to actually try and keep them employed as, as much as we possibly can. You know, we've tried to keep as many people in the public service employed, and I have no doubt there are areas of casuals or contract workforce who have had the term of their contract come to an end because there is no longer a job and it may have absolutely nothing to do with COVID in the normal course of business. But we've tried to keep as many people as employed as possible. The government also provided some supports to local government as well to, to assist them. I can't remember the actual number, I'll get it, I, I have a number in my mind, but it was a reasonably large number, but I'll, I'll try and grab that while we're here.
Yeah, okay, well, I'd like, I mean, and I take in, in, on face value what you've said about the government trying to keep as many people engaged, but has the government, for example, made a policy decision that casuals engaged by state agencies would continue to be paid the usual regular rostered pay and to be deployed? the usual regular rostered pay and to be deployed, you know?
If they're an employee, yes. If they're an employee. I think I understand your question, but we've tried to employ or redeploy as much as we can. And in a crisis, it means that a lot of people have tilted in terms of what their priorities are. All the things that you've talked about, asked us about before about mobility across the public service has actually really come to the fore in the last few months where we've had people in Premier and Cabinet dealing with return travellers and working with the Department of Foreign Affairs and Trade. These are people that normally would do events and protocol. They, people have redeployed across the board into the State Emergency Operations Centre. So we've sought to redeploy as many people as we possibly can. What I said about keeping the infrastructure pipeline going, where a lot of the contingent workforce would be, where a lot of the contract workforce would be, has meant a lot of those have been retained, a significant amount. If the construction sector had have gone down, that would have been a major issue. Governments also provided over two hundred million dollars, I think the number was, just for contract cleaning, for example. So the amount of casual that we've needed for the schools' cleaning programme for a couple of thousand schools, the public transport network and every major interchange has been a significant jobs generator.
Well, can you give us some numbers around those?
On the, I can give you the public number of the amount of funding that went towards, for example, the cleaning contracts. How many have been deployed across the board?
Well, that's actually more, that's more what I'm interested in.
Yeah.
I'm interested in how many, how many more bodies on the ground in terms of?
As best I can, I'll take it on notice.
Sure, yeah. This is not a gotcha, I'm actually interested in the figures, so.
And it's a significant amount because actually getting that amount of cleaning resource to two thousand schools to reopen, you know, stage manner in early May, the amount of hygiene products, the amount of sanitizer and other kit that we needed to reopen those schools, the cleaning staff that went in and the contracts that went into that was a significant undertaking. And more power to them all for what they did and what they continue to do in schools and certainly across the public transport network.
Can I just ask one question, Mr. Ridden? Do you have plans to continue that beyond the end of this term, the cleaning in schools?
The cleaning, the cleaning in schools in a COVID-safe environment, you know, in terms of having plans, the COVID-safe, you know, protocols that we would have for any area of the economy, we would expect to continue until there's a vaccine.
Yeah. So, Mr. Ridden, just to take on notice?
Just to keep them open. Otherwise, you know, we need to provide a COVID-safe workplace and/or business, and I can't imagine that would change until we'd either eradicated, the federal government and states have adopted a position of first containment back in February, March, and then suppression. Some have eradicated while they've closed their borders, some states, but it's a suppression strategy. While there's a suppression strategy, there's a chance of having localised outbreaks, and therefore we need to make sure that, you know, all the resources are at hand to continue with the current protocols we have.
So, Mr. Ridden, I'd like to understand, and I understand you'll have to take this on notice and come back if you've got the figures, is how many casuals the state government and its agencies employed, say, at the beginning of the pandemic, say, when the public health orders were made, say, by the end of June? And how many were being engaged at the end of, sorry, at the end of March compared to the end of June, just to see if there's a change?
So, Mr. Sill, before you accept it, I'll acknowledge the question. The timeframe to actually achieve that, and this is to Mr. Shubridge as chair, I don't know if I'll get that in twenty-one days. I genuinely don't.
Look, I think the committee would be happy to grant any extension of time, speaking just for myself, if that means we can get the figures. I mean, as I said, this is not a gotcha, I'm actually just.
No, mine's more about what we talked about before. We do State of the Sector once a year. We're in extraordinary circumstances now. Public sector, our People Matters Engagement Survey, for example, we've had to set aside because we normally have it done in May, June. We've all been doing pulse checks and pulse surveys quite considerably across the board for our people, but counting the amount of casuals right at the moment and the amount of information that would require to pull together, I have no idea how long that might take.
Mr. Ridden, could I suggest that with the indulgence of the rest of the committee, if you indicate within the twenty-one days, what, if any, timeframe would be required to provide that, we will consider that.
Shall do, chief.
In terms of contract staff or fixed-term contract staff, have, and I think you've said wherever possible, those contracts have been extended or continued. Do you have any sense of how many, whether it's eighty percent, ninety percent, fifty percent, or how many of those people are on fixed-term or?
I don't, I don't have a real sense. All I can tell you would be that whilst a lot of people have worked from home, from my experience in what's been in front of me, most people, you know, remain engaged in New South Wales public sector, you know, casual, contract or full-time, but I don't have a sense. We are one of the employers who is putting out, as I said, that infrastructure pipeline, casuals for cleaning and other areas where we've had, you know, small amounts of jobs growth, as you can imagine, in places like health and others. Education would have had it because of the casuals in cleaning schools. But I don't have a sense of exact, but I would imagine our job retention would be significantly higher than a lot of areas of the private sector.
Again, I'd like to understand and on notice how long it would take you to get that information for us. All right, now, you mentioned the working from home, and I think in previous discussions during budget estimates, you had said that it was a very high proportion of the public sector that undertook flexible work, which doesn't only mean working from home, it might mean working from different locations. But do you have a very good sense of the proportion of the public service that are now working from home? And when did that happen? Like, at what point in March, for example, were people, I guess, redeployed from the office to working from home?
I put out a series of messages to the entire public service throughout March and April. Firstly, just to give clear direction to the entire public service about what our expectations were. The first couple were about giving them advice about COVID-19 and the response from government. Then they were about getting yourself ready, getting yourself both ready to deploy to work from home, getting yourself set up at home as best as possible, getting yourself mentally ready for what would be in front of us over the winter period, which has turned out to be the case, which is a difficult winter. Then we put out more and more messaging cluster by cluster on how service delivery had changed, how we would want people to work flexibly. I think we put out a notification, and I have it here somewhere, about the actual date where we said, now if you can work flexibly from home, do it. Some took it very literally and cleared out buildings overnight. Premier and Cabinet as an agency, because of the nature of our work of Cabinet, the nature of our work around the State Emergency Operations Centre, for example, myself and most of my exec, pretty much full-time, either in the office or at State Emergency Operations Centre or somewhere between those two. So we've been sort of against my best advice for everyone to work from home. I've been at the workplace, that's just the way it is. A significant number of people worked from home. It tested our, it didn't test our policies and procedures, people did it and did it well. It tested our ICT and digital.
Yes.
And it went fairly well. It went fairly well, and I'd probably be a fairly hard marker on that normally, but it went okay. It went a lot better than it could have. I think part of the reason it did is because we've been promoting, if not why not, flexible work for five long years now, and we've pushed that as hard as possible. And it meant when we said go, and because we'd had bushfires, floods before that, and a lot of people had been practising or indeed in live circumstances, working through their business continuity plans throughout the lead into Christmas, over Christmas, and then into COVID, en masse, people have worked flexibly. A lot of frontline people either, you know, at the workplace, sorry, at their workplace and then trying to flex as much as they can as well. That's been great learnings. Hence, I said to Mr. Graham, make sure that we record everything we can about maintaining what is good, going back to what might be more normal for where it hasn't worked as well. Across the entire public service and indeed across the entire New South Wales private sector, we've been measuring what works, what makes people happy, how engaged they are, how productive they are. The private sector have been doing the same. We've been swapping a lot of lessons learned. I'd have to say that across the board, all of us, private sector and public sector, are about the same place in terms of our learnings, in terms of what they wanted to do as a new normal, how many days at home might be a new normal for some, testing their productivity. A lot have said their productivity has improved, just with the commute out and a few other things. Some didn't like the period where they had kids at home whilst trying to work. It was their words, inverted commas, an invasion of the blurring of work and their life. But in the main, couldn't be more proud of how the public services responded to directions that we've had to give them, and I mean small d-directions, not any forced direction, but directions we've given them, how they've responded, how they've responded to coming back to work in a staged manner, where coming back to work means working from home and at their normal office and/or a third location. Their resilience, their flexibility has been quite exemplary, I've got to say. And the reason I told you about the private sector is because the sharing of lessons learned from really big private corporate settings, we are no different in how they're trying to learn as well at this point in time.
So do you have a sense of how, what proportion of public sector workers were working from home at the peak of the lockdown?
I can, I can get you that. I'll probably get you that more readily than some of the other questions you asked.
And also how many now are working from home now that the restrictions are being?
So, significant proportion working from home, that answers the first one, continues a significant proportion because to the questions asked about what do people do now? And, you know, for example, will the supports continue in schools? Nothing's changed. The risk profile, we've managed, you know, effectively to this point in time, but the risk profile remains the same. We have to be vigilant across the board, so therefore, just because you read a media report about, you know, a low positive test case rate in this state, doesn't mean we all come back to work. And a few did, actually, a few did, just in terms of behavioural insights. You know, we had some growth in public sector employees coming back into the office because they thought everything was okay. We had to remind them that the normal will be to work from home until we advise otherwise, and people continue to do that. And they're just training day in, day out to try and get that as a quality and productive way of working, and a lot have done really well.
So nothing's changed on the policy settings about the primary position is still, if you can, to work from home?
Yeah, at this point.
That policy position hasn't changed?
Yeah, that's right. Until I put out another note for the public service, the public health orders, you know, remain in place and they're the same, but for, so, you know, we all follow the public health orders as well, but for the public service, until we go out and, you know, say something definitive again, they haven't changed.
Yep. So given the physical distancing health advice and given the sort of space in public sector workplaces, have you developed a sort of a maximum number of staff on any given day permitted into the various workplaces?
Yes.
For those agencies to work with?
Yes, we have.
Okay, that's good. And that's working okay? You're not hitting the maximum or getting over the maximum?
So we could have, as I said, you know, people read media reports and all of a sudden we get a, you know, a bit of a flood back into the workplace. So on the public transport network and its constraints and further servicing, services and further capacity has been unleashed just in the last few days. Lifts in buildings and physical distancing, particularly in major boardrooms and meeting rooms, we've had signage up quite early, you know, as COVID-safe. That's all working well. People are very willingly compliant about wanting to be back in the office every, you know, every now and then to keep touch. Ours will be about how people and teams and culture is maintained through this period and beyond, about what a new normal will be. But it's an amazing thing to watch how people have actually responded. The entire state of New South Wales and, you know, complying with public health orders, and will need to continue doing it, but certainly the New South Wales Public Service, remarkable job.
Yep. Now, just in terms of, I think, productivity you mentioned and people working, you know, the reports I've been getting, although they're impressionistic and anecdotal across many different agencies, is that with the absence now of commuting, many public sector workers are working additional hours, sometimes two or three extra hours per day, and that's a significant productivity gain right across the public sector. Is that your impression as the head of the service, that you're seeing a significant increase in hours worked and intensification of more productivity?
So I differentiate working lots of hours with productivity.
I understand, well, I'm happy to disaggregate that.
So, but as I said, just in those early couple of months, the blurring of work and life, particularly with kids at home for a period there, was a unique experience. And we pulse surveyed.
That's a euphemism, a unique experience. We'd all join.
I think I've heard the entire spectrum of responses to that. We pulse surveyed recently, and my concern was we needed to pulse survey when that was occurring because it was such a significant issue in the community for private sector and public sector. We pulse surveyed more recently after that, and people's view on their productivity, their own personal view and the view of productivity for the agencies has been quite strong. Private sector has been the same, they say it's quite strong. The commute being taken out is a positive, it's not, it's now filled with lots more hours of work. The biggest thing was, as I said, that blurring and the invasion of space in those first couple of months, I found. But we've got a lot more pulse surveying to do because we're not doing a People Matters Engagement Survey until later on the year. We'll continue to assess that because it'll be the most fascinating thing out of this. And because we're in a position where we can examine that, we're working really closely with the private sector and partnering and swapping notes, it'll land where it'll land. But all I can say is all the good things about it that people want to keep. When we did the pulse survey this time, which is a bit different to others, list of questions about productivity, engagement scores and all those things, which are positive, they were positive, but the amount of free-form text that people wanted to tell us about their personal circumstances, and it wasn't, you know, just an endless gripe, it was actually quite positive, some areas that we need to fix, and that's across most clusters as well. Private sector, the same type of thing that they're sharing with us as well.
So two things, I think, before my time comes to an end. One is in terms, living aside productivity, do you have a sense of how many additional hours have been worked across the sector, either by agency or by cluster? Is there any recording of that? Or do you have a sense of it? And can you give us what that sense is?
No, I really can't. I mean, really individual circumstances. Some people, you know, remember, flexi-time and flexible working are now two different things. And, you know, how people actually work during the day.
My question was about working longer hours in the?
I don't particularly. I would have some people that would tell me that ten Microsoft Teams videos in a day might.
Is there any recording of this by agencies?
There is some, but it's very, very early days, very early days. And it's mainly about how people are actually dealing with stuff online.
Okay. Okay, just, okay, just the next, the next question I had was really in relation to resourcing working from home, and this is not a criticism because I think the state was kind of pitched into it, but I'm getting a lot of reports about people, you know, working at their dining table rather than a sort of proper ergonomically designed sort of office equipment. What work is the sector doing to make sure that when people are working from their home, they're working with proper equipment in a way that's ergonomically safe?
So we, for, I'll talk about Premier and Cabinet and then maybe the broader public service. Premier and Cabinet, certainly because of the business continuity arrangements we need to put in place for bushfires and floods, people were fairly well-practiced. I've talked to you before about the level of flexible work in Premier and Cabinet being pretty high anyway, meant that that transition to asking everyone to do it was not such a big deal. There are individual circumstances that chief people officers have to support people in terms of their homework arrangements, and I think we, again, would, all of us have our own practical examples of how different they've been across the board. I think that'll be something that will be examined about what office space looks like at our home probably the next couple of years, so very early days in it. But we try to make people as comfortable in their workplace as they can. I don't just mean physically comfortable, giving them the tools to do their job. Some people have given us feedback on that without a doubt, but our chief people officers and certainly in Premier and Cabinet tries to respond to those things. Across the board, I think the Public Service Commissioner and Kate Foy will continue as the person responsible for employee relations, will continue to work on that, will continue to pulse survey what works for people, what they need us to adjust. I've heard similar anecdotes from various areas about what people want. They're not that different to what they used to request prior to COVID. Probably the biggest difference I've found is on the employer not being so rules-based about, you know, we have to go at your house and take lots of photos and do this and that. We've actually tried to let people get on with it in a little bit more flexible, with a bit more flexibility.
Can I just ask one follow-up, Mr. Ridden? And I would put on the record that I'm a huge supporter of all roles flex, so.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask whether there was a budget for additional support for people, whether it be printers or VPN access or whatever it might be? Has there been additional support?
I think our normal corporate support budgets are covering what we need at this point in time. I couldn't speak for all clusters, but in the main, we are providing people with what they need. For example, when it comes to printers, people are both, you know, we're almost paperless in a lot of the stuff that we do. This is unusual today. I'm just, we're almost paperless in our offices and have been for a couple of years, that's certainly Premier and Cabinet, because it's more secure as well. But secondly, people can print in the office from home as well. So the needs for those things are changing quite quickly as well. Ours is around making sure that we learn lessons as we go. So, for example, government announced. So for example, government announced, uh, 1.6 billion dollar digital and ICT, uh, fund, uh, just recently. Um, several hundred million dollars of that will go towards, uh, cyber, um, and, and target hardening of, of ourselves. Um, so those type of areas, absolutely. Uh, each cluster then, um, uh, will have areas of digital and ICT improvements that they'll see out of this. So whether it's virtual healthcare, um, whether it's, um, the digital, um, uh, education that's come and the, the better balance there. Uh, the planning, uh, system and, uh, taking that more online with e-planning and working with councils. Whole range of areas where reforms have just accelerated and, uh, where they might need additional digital and ICT support, we'll certainly, um, uh, provide it there. But when it comes to iPads, laptops, in the main, as I said, I think our B C, our business continuity plans were such that we, um, had allowed for that. And, you know, your opening comment about all roles flex, we can't say that and then not back it in with that equipment. And it's been like that for several years, I think.
All right. Um, Mr. Redden, are, are, are there provisions for the payment for internet or energy or those other additional costs that staff will incur if they're working from home as opposed to the office?
Not at this point in time, not at this point in time that I'm, not that I'm aware of.
Um, given that that's been sort of outsourced to individual employees now, um, are there, are there, is there anything afoot to work out a policy to properly compensate those employees?
Not that I'm aware of, um, I can take that on notice.
Um, Mr. Redden, you said that the, um.
Sorry, just in terms of that, the, the equipment that we provide to date, um, um, you know, there, there's a certain amount of equipment we provide. I can furnish that to you, but, um, anything outside of that, um, and I, I acknowledge the issue you're raising, um, I'll take on notice.
All right. Um, thanks, Mr. Redden. You, you indicated that the special leave, and that was the 20 days special leave.
Up to 20 days.
Twenty days special leave for the pandemic has been a, a, almost like a safety valve, putting words in your mouth. You said it was an important part of the response.
But just to as a consistent part of the response, that, you know, people were immediately concerned of not understanding what they were about to launch into and not understanding how the disease might spread through the community, what it might mean for the elderly, for their kids, and needing something that said, I don't know whether I'll be taking family community service leave or sick leave. I don't know what my circumstances will be. I'm a, I'm the primary carer of potentially my parent. It just provided some consistency.
Yeah. And, and that, of course, was a distinct form of leave available in the public sector, not in the private sector, uh, at least on a, on a, on a comprehensive basis. Um, do you have any data about how much special leave has been taken?
Not on me at the moment. I don't know.
That's being, um, followed by all the chief people officers in each of the different clusters. Um, I should, I should say, part, part of the approach is to give very clear principles from the centre. So things like if you're, you know, uh, willing, able to work from home or work flexibly, we absolutely support you to do that. Um, there are many reasons why people can't work from home. Um, so if there's, if they're able to work from other locations, we want to support that. If there are reasons that people need to take leave due to COVID because of self-isolation, um, they have to look after an unwell family member or there are childcare issues, that's where the special leave provisions are there for people to have that as a, um, as an opportunity and an option very early up. So there's not these, um, uh, rules-based trying to figure out what rule fits what circumstance. So it's a principles-based approach and allows for managers to make decisions at local levels to support their, their staff without having to ring up DPC and say, what's the rule for this? And I think that's been what's proven to be quite successful. We've had, um, as I understand it, uh, very few disputes in terms of these issues. People have taken it up, but certainly on a cluster-by cluster level, those things are being.
Well, if you could give us the data you can about the special leave that's been taken, if you can break it down on a monthly basis, that, that would be very useful so as we could track how it's worked.
Yes, I'll see what's available from it. Certainly we can, I'm sure we can get it from a cluster-by cluster, um, and if we can break that down, uh, appropriately.
And then if there's any data on applications that have been refused.
Of course.
Because you, which would back up the, your, your, the position you put about small levels of disputation.
Sure.
Um, the, um, Mr. Redden, I, I, I was asking questions about whether or not there were any provisions in place um, for a hardship payment for those workers without sick leave, similar to what's been put forward in Victoria, which is a $1,500 payment available for workers in the pu- the private sector funded by the public sector for those workers who don't have sick leave and need to take time off. Are there any arrangements at all, um, for, for, for helping out those workers in the public sector in use, in the pri- in the private sector in New South Wales?
Only private sector people who are working for the public sector, casuals and, um, contract staff that we talked about before, of course. Um, you know, we try to keep them in jobs. There, there's not any that I'm aware of, um, support similar to, say, um, uh, our southern jurisdiction of Victoria, um, similar in New South Wales. Um, uh, since you asked us some questions, estimates in, in March on that, um, Jobkeeper and Jobseeker have obviously, um, come into play. And, uh, the standing down provisions, um, of quite literally hundreds of thousands of people have now taken up Jobkeeper seems to be the most significant support.
All right. Um, but of course, Jobkeeper excludes the, the vast bulk of casual workers and short-term contract workers. And that was why the Victorian scheme was set up to fill up the gaps in the, in the federal support. But you're not aware of any plans or proposals for that at the New South Wales?
Jobkeeper and Jobseeker at the Commonwealth.
Um, have there, has there been any study done by, by, by the industrial relations team about the, the number of people in New South Wales who don't have access to si- to sick leave? And who therefore are a potential risk not only to themselves but the rest of the public by attending work when they're sick?
Not, not that I'm aware of, Mr. Shubridge, um, but again, uh, there's been a lot going on, so I might ask Ms. Foy, are you aware of any?
Not of any data. I mean, we, we certainly with the Public Sector Commission look at the profile of the overall public sector workforce, permanent casual contract. Um, there may be some data available. Uh, we have, um, obviously putting, um, pe- keeping people in jobs, keeping our workplaces safe at the forefront. That's why we've got, um, the circular and round employer relate, employment, uh, arrangements. It's why we support our customers to work on a case-by-case level, um, in the business and support at each of those health and, and job priorities. But I'm happy to look at, take that on notice and.
Just, just so you don't get misdirected, Ms. Foy, my, my question is about, um, public sector providing payment for private sector workers who don't have access to sick leave. So as they don't feel compelled to go to work just simply to keep a roof over their heads or, you know, be able to feed their families. Um, while, while sick. That's, which is what the Victorian model is designed for.
I'll have to take that on notice.
Yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm, uh, at, at, at the point that you're, um, I did get an answer on the matter of the hoarding, so I'm happy to provide you that at any point.
Well, now is good.
Uh, so I understand that that is, that is where they're digitising the part of the, the, um, powerhouse. And it's for the safety of staff and of visitors. And those hoardings would, um, adjust to whatever process that they're digitising the assets inside the powerhouse.
So, so those, those large galleries are being closed off to allow for some digital record?
Allow for those types of work, the curatorial works to digitise the assets.
Okay. And I, I understand you're doing that on instructions, Ms. Foy.
Exactly.
I understand that, that, that's what you're advised, is it?
That's what I'm advised.
Okay. Um, Ms. Foy, going back to the $50 million, um, arts funding.
Yep.
Um, I can't recall if it was your answer or if it was Mr. Graham's question, um, which was about the 11 companies.
The 11 majors.
The 11 majors.
Yep.
Um, was, was, was it the position that the, the $25 million? I'm trying to find a euphemism for hibernation payment, but the $25 million maintenance.
Keep companies.
Interregnum payment.
Yes.
Um, um, was that being focused on the 11 majors?
Uh, it's, so it's been focused on the arts and culture sector of which the 11 majors are part.
All right. Now, I was trying to do a sketch of what the 11 majors are and I'm missing one. I have, I could, and I could have, some of these may be in error. I've got Sydney Theatre Company, Bangarra, Sydney Symphony, Australian Theatre for Young People, Australian Opera and Australian Ballet, Belle Shakespeare, Belvoir and the Hayes Theatre. One or two of those may be in error. I only get to 10.
A couple of those in error. Uh, sorry, I'm just trying, I do have that list with me and I'm just having a bit of a trouble trying to find.
Couple of those with a bullet.
Sorry.
There's a couple of those have entered.
So, uh, Bangarra, Australian branded Bergoff, uh, um, orchestra, Belvoir Theatre, Music Aviva, Opera Australia, Sydney Dance Company, Sydney Theatre Company, Australian Ballet and the Belle Shakespeare.
All right. Um.
They're the, under the major performing arts agreements, so they're under that particular agreement that we have with the Australia Council. So it's a New South Wales, um, federal. There are a bunch of other organisations, uh, which would include some of the ones that you've mentioned, um, that are funded by Create, um, and, and, uh, part of the arts, uh, the arts, um, group.
So, so the, the concerns that have been raised with, with my office are that, um, that the $50 million is, is overly focused upon those major players and those smaller, um, extremely vulnerable, um, um, companies and, and, and agencies are, are not getting a fair share of the $50 million. What do you have to say to that?
As I, I think the, the, the most accurate answer and the, the answer is the criteria that I set out before, which is New South Wales-based, um, finance, in financial distress, COVID-impacted, not-for-profit, um, and arts and culture company, they are the criteria.
All right. And, but the concern is, I'll be very clear about it, is the majors have got a, 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 a rails run on this. They're already at the table. They're going to get the bulk of it, actually, the bulk of the $50 million because there's already been the engagement with them. And there's going to be only crumbs left for the rest of the sector.
I, I, I think that would be unfair to say there's only been engagement with them. As I listed very early on, um, the level of engagement we've had the arts sector and I've personally been involved in most, uh, most of those. Um, and I had a webinar two weeks ago with 160 companies on. Um, we've received interest from several hundred. Uh, had an, uh, my team regularly engage with the sector, both on the reopening as well as the package. Um, there is, uh, there is clear criteria from government, um, which is, as I, as I've described. Um, and we are working with the sector across all of those to make sure that we have a thriving and vibrant arts sector. And also to support those, um, where they need to look at sustainability so that we do have sustainable, sustainable arts companies.
All right. Um, uh, is there any planning in place for a round two of a cultural fund? I mean, given the fact you've had a hun- engagement with 160 agencies, $50 million is not going to go very far, spread across 160 different companies and agencies.
Be unfair to say every agency is looking for money. Um, a lot of them are looking for a level of support and expertise that we can provide, um, both in terms of advice around COVID, um, adv- advice about how, and working and giving them access to our health experts about how they can, uh, close their businesses down as they've been required to under the health orders, to help understand the health orders, to understand what it means to be a COVID-safe place. The best thing for the arts sector, um, is to get people reopening in a safe and sustainable way. Getting people back into work, whether they're artists or set builders or cleaners of a major place. But getting these places sustainably open in a COVID-safe way is the best thing we can do. Um, the arts, the, the funding is there as a part, just one part of the range of support we provide to the sector. Um, they go, they come for us, to us for all sorts of advice, little local galleries and museums, um, maybe in Orange or in Taree or in Wollongong. And we work with them as best we can to support them through what is a, a, as you know, and as, as everyone's expressed, a very difficult time for the arts.
Um, will there be a commitment to a, a transparent decision-making for the $50 million allocation? So that the recommendations will be, will be, will be, the recommendations that come from the department will also be visible as well as the decisions?
We will, we will provide the analysis to the government as they've requested us to do and those decisions will be made by, by the premier and that would be a matter for the, for the premier.
Well, my question is about, um, transparency of the recommendation process. I mean, you would be, you would have to be living under a rock to not realise there's concerns about the way in which grants, transparency of the allocation of grants money. Will there be a commitment to transparency for both the recommendations and the decision-making, um, around the $50 million?
She's answered that, David. She's gonna put it up the line and it'll be up to the premier, unsurprisingly. Um, don't ask her to put a neck on the line.
No, no, no. That's, um, thank you, Trevor. I appreciate your assistance. Um, so, Ms. Foy, the, um, the, the position is, it's currently, the, the current position is those recommendations will be made to the minister.
We provide.
And what if any, what if any?
We provide advice to the government.
What if any material is published is a matter for them?
We, we provide our advice to the government. Um, this is about the financial distress of companies. Um, we also need to think about, uh, the commercial position of those companies and be sensitive to that.
Or is it, is it your recommendation then to, to, that the, this, that, that? Is it your advice that the recommendations should not be made public for those reasons, for commercial and confidence reasons?
My job is to provide the advice to the premier and the best possible advice, using the resources available to us, both in Create, uh, both at P W C, who are providing independent financial advice and through the New South Wales Treasury.
Um, what is the, um, what is the sum of the contract with P W C?
I'd have to take that on notice.
Um, and could you provide details of what the scope of that contract is, Ms. Foy?
I'm happy to take that on notice.
Um, you, you gave some evidence, um, which I was grateful for about that, that's been the two tranches, that I think was 6.4 million.
So the, the first was the redirection of funds, around 6.34 million, um, for a number of activities. I'm more than happy to outline what those are if you'd like.
That was my question. Yeah, thanks, Ms. Foy.
Okay. Sorry, give me a moment.
And do you know what, Ms. Foy? We can cut.
Uh, yes, so 6.34 million. Um, so there's a million in rental relief to the arts organisation that are housed in Create, New South Wales Arts Properties. Um, 450,000 to support, um, the digital engagement with communities and audience. So we didn't just shut the doors of our, of our institutions, um, and, and arts places didn't just shut doors. They then went online like we did, uh, as workers and working flexibly go online.
Like what we saw with the Opera House.
Beg your pardon?
Like what we saw with.
Yes, that wasn't used for the, the Opera House. That wasn't for Opera House. That was for other companies. So, um, I should, I should say that. So, so I understand Opera House, um, did some fantastic stuff with that, From Our House to Yours, as part of their programming. Um, 700,000 for a new screen slate development fund. Um, and when I talk about screen slate, this is in advance of being able to go into production, either because of financial or, uh, the COVID-related health orders. Um, this allows for companies or, uh, people to undertake early planning and, uh, in screen in advance of being able to go into production. There was 350,000 to in, um, increase to our small projects grants. Um, for example, for, to assist in script development. Uh, there was 180,000 for, uh, new rounds of the creative leadership programme. So that's about supporting arts, uh, arts leaders, uh, and, and their development as part of the sector. Two million in funding for round two of our annual organisation's creative Kuri projects. Um, independent arts and cultural organisations, multi-year and local government art and cultural programmes. And one and a half million in screen funding, uh, early and advanced development funding, production fin- finance. Um, the post-digital production, uh, rebate, screen industry and other audience development and strategic opportunities related to screen. So 1.5 for largely a number of screen-related activities.
And has that all been paid and allocated?
Uh, I'd have, I'd have to check, but I suspect it's, I suspect it has been allocated, but I'll confirm.
Okay. The opposition.
Do you, do you?
Geez, the enthusiasm is right.
So I, I want to turn back to, um, Carriage Works, uh, just to where we leapt off there after those initial questions.
Yep.
The, um, your response on the question about the timeline was that's a matter for the administrator.
Yes, yeah.
That's not what reports are about the administrator's view say. So the view from the administrator and potential benefactors is the key obstacle here is a long-term lease. And that's not a matter for them. That's a matter for government.
So the lease is.
Your view about the lease issue?
Of course, of course. So, um, going back to the primary principles is about a sustainable arts and culture pricing at, at Carriage Works. Um, as part of that, they've said to us, and we've, we've, we've had discussions about part of that sustainability is about a lease, um, for a period of time that is appropriate. And those discussions are ongoing. Um, we want to make sure that it is a successful organisation, um, and that obviously the. We want to make sure that it is a successful organisation and that obviously the appropriate measures are in place for both Carriage Works and for government as part of that lease, but that is part of the discussions.
What's the length of their current lease? What are they?
As I understand it, they're going on a month-by-month, I'll clarify that, but we're currently in discussions about a longer-term lease. As part of their approach to sustainability.
Yeah, and you acknowledge they say that's the key assurance they need.
I think this is not, this is about a discussion between us, what we want to see for a sustainable arts precinct, and what they say, what we all need to have is the ingredients of that, whether it's around, and we certainly welcome the philanthropy from many people who've put their hand up, what that means as far as, you know, obligations with future grant payments, what it means as far as lease agreements, et cetera. So all of those things come together. This is not a Mexican standoff, if you like.
Who's the decision-maker here? Is it Create or DPC or Transport?
Create is part of DPC. We hold the lease and it's, these are a joint decision that we, these are joint negotiations that we're going through with Carriage Works Limited and the administrator and Create, which is part of DPC.
Right, but there's no obstacle to issuing a longer-term lease? There's no ability, like, apart from sustainability?
The sustainability of the organisation and financial sustainability.
But it's not an issue with Transport of saying we don't want to issue the lease, this is a decision for, DPC is the decision-maker?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Is you're concerned about, so Transport, you know, with the asset, leasing it to Create, then it's a matter of Create dealing with whoever might operate and run.
Ultimately, and Transport.
It does seem extraordinary though, that this institution's on a month-to-month lease. That's, and that is how it's been reported, I agree with the position.
That's not a matter for Transport, I think was your question, sorry, part of it.
No, I think you've answered that. I accept what you're saying about who the decision-maker is. It seems extraordinary that this institution is on a month-to-month lease. Why is that the case?
We have an institution that has an administrator. It would be appropriate for us to work through those lease issues on the basis of looking at their financial sustainability.
But how long have they been on the month-to-month?
Well, this is starting to stray, I'll say, Chair.
Well, this is the highest-profile arts casualty crisis.
Sorry, I'll take you one at a time, so point of order.
Look, there is obviously a component of COVID in this, but the questions have to be related to the terms of reference. And what I suggest is that my friend is starting to become somewhat expansive in his approach. And I ask that you encourage him to look to the terms of reference of this inquiry.
I always encourage everybody to keep a close eye on the terms of reference. But my understanding is, my understanding is, the rationale is, Carriage Works are in their financial difficulty, not entirely, but in part because of the COVID-nanine response and therefore, and I think Ms. Foy touched upon that earlier. So Ms. Foy, if you're able to answer the question?
Yep. May I ask what the question was? I should say that these...
I might ask, in order to help my...
More making a statement, actually.
To this question.
Okay, well, I think we're moving on, sorry.
One of the reports to reflect the government's position is that Carriage Works had been paid its 2020 grand, that is for this, I think, calendar year. What is the amount of that grant?
It's, I'll get the exact figure on notice, the grant is around about two and a half million.
Right, and the exact figure on notice would be helpful, but that's very helpful. When was that paid?
I'd have to get back to you on that.
Was it paid this year?
Again, I'd have to get back to you on that.
The reporting was then that the 2021 grant had not been paid. I think we both agree on that.
It's 2020.
Yes, no, 2020 has been paid, 2021 has not.
Can I just be clear for the record, we're talking about calendar year, not financial year?
Correct.
Is that what we're talking?
We're talking about calendar year. May I also just restate that these issues regarding the financial position of Carriage Works preceded COVID. There is obviously an impact to them being able to hold certain events, but these preceded COVID.
Yes, although clearly the COVID has impacted on their financial position. My question is simply this, though, the 2021 grand, it's been reported as usually being paid on July, it'd usually be paid July 1 this year. Would you like to comment on that claim which has been made?
I'd take that, the detail on notice, I don't have it in front of me, and given we're dealing with such an important matter, I'd rather be accurate.
And an organisation that's in administration at the moment.
Beg your pardon?
And an organisation that's in administration at the moment, I assume you have additional checks and balances before you made a payment to an organisation in administration?
Mr. Graham, I just want to respond to the comment you made about, you know, the impact of COVID or this predating COVID, it predates COVID, we'd be only speculating what COVID would or wouldn't have done. They were where they were pre, so I just want to respond to that because you said that we didn't respond, and I just want to make clear, I couldn't speculate and neither could Kate about how that would have been.
Yeah, no, I accept that. And I think finally, just the, this has been a high-profile casualty of this period, for whatever reason, you've said that work's ongoing, what do you expect is the timeline for those discussions?
I'd get back to you on those, that we have ongoing discussions. And I should reiterate, payments for 2020, 2021 would be, as I understand it, eligible in 2021, not in 2020. So I'll get back to you with the detail on that. I'll get back to you with the detail on the discussions because I'd need to get an update from the administrator, I don't have it readily to hand.
Thanks very much. I've got a quick IR question and then I'll move back to the arts as well. Are you aware of a proposal, Mr. Redden, that was outlined initially by the McKell Institute, to provide low-paid frontline workers who continue to work through the pandemic with an economic stimulus back, economic stimulus payment of $1,500?
No, I'm not aware of that.
Okay, so this is a...
I've not seen anything, neither the McKell Institute nor that figure. Do you, I'm not aware of it, sorry.
Okay, all right. Well, my next question was, do you support the proposal or are you working on it? It's a payment that would provide workers, hospital cleaners, retail and supermarket workers, very low-paid employees with an economic stimulus.
Yeah, so I think you asked me a question about whether to support it, it'd be a government policy matter to support it. I'll go back to what I said before about areas such as cleaners. The number, I just want to get accurate, was the additional cleaning, additional cleaners, the funding for that was $250 million, just to be clear. But in terms of direct supports, I don't think you're speculating in a policy area, so I won't.
Okay, can I just ask you one follow-up on the $250 million? How much of that has been expended so far?
I'll come back to you on that. I'll take that on notice and let you know, but, and I'll try to determine, as Mr. Seale requested, was around how many casuals that is employed. I imagine we'd have a fair understanding of that because there's mobile large contracts let for the schools in particular, but Transport probably have a fairly good rate, I just don't know how quickly we can...
Customs services as well.
Customs services as well, how quickly we can pull that together, but I'll come back to you.
I appreciate that, thanks. So I just wanted to then turn back to smaller arts organisations, which Mr. Shubridge started to touch on, and specifically talk about the Flight Path Theatre in Marrickville. They had, they're based at Addison Road at the community centre there. They had a lease since last July and they negotiated with the landlord to get a rent freeze, but after backwards and forwards, they couldn't get an agreement. They took on a lot of debt and losses, and I'm sure this is a common situation amongst small cultural organisations. So they couldn't take on any more in setting up. Given they can't run any productions at the moment, it's likely that they'll actually have to end the organisation because they haven't been able to organise the rent agreement. Are you aware, Mr. Redden or Ms. Foy, of any discussions with the Flight Path Theatre?
Flight Path Theatre, I'm not personally aware.
And for the record, neither am I.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that'd be strange. I'm happy to go back to the agency and see if there's been any discussions, but I'm not aware of them having made an approach to us or, certainly not to be directly.
Okay, no, if you could find out, I mean, obviously they're in a situation, of course they couldn't negotiate that rent with the landlord, they're in quite a dire situation. And so I'd be interested to see whether, have you put in place anything to support these kinds of organisations who are unable to get these kinds of agreements?
Sorry, could you ask that question again?
Have you put anything in place to provide arts organisations with this kind of support who can't get agreements?
Look, we provide a broad range of advice and advice to the sector. If, we have a team that's specifically been established to support the sector during this time, I'm very happy to go back and have a look at this particular instance. We've had a range of organisations who have expressed interest or in the early stages of putting forward various submissions, but I'm happy to find that one about Flight Path, as, you know, as long as I'm not offending any of their commercial concerns and put that back on notice.
But anything, I mean, we've discussed about how we've asked organisations to come forward through the rescue page if there's any information that needs to be provided to Ms. Foy.
Yeah, yeah.
If you've got additional information, I'm more than happy to take it.
High-profile community casualties, so.
I wanted to move on then to another example of Walk Now Productions, which is Walk Now Productions, and that's an independent theatre, co-op and film group, and they actually work in bringing diversity to the theatre space. Are you aware of any discussions or support with independent theatre groups? Because they're actually set up as a cooperative and not a charity, and so they're not actually eligible for certain grants?
I'm not aware of that specific one. We do have conversations with a broad range, both, you know, not-for-profit and commercials as well, whether they're big or small. As far as Walk Now, I don't have any advice about specifics, but again, I'm very happy. Are they based in Sydney, as?
I don't have that written just here.
So if there's any information...
Yeah, please pass it over.
Certainly. I mean, can you provide some advice more generally on organisations that are set up as cooperatives? Are they going to be eligible for the create, for the arts package that's been announced by the government?
Not-for-profit, New South Wales-based arts company, they are the key things. There is a range of advice we'll certainly provide and support where we possibly can.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Redden, I think you said that the impression, at least reported from workers themselves, maybe from their managers, was that the productivity gains during the pandemic, when people were working from home, were quite strong. I wasn't quite clear in my recollection about whether there was any recording or quantification of that by individual agencies or clusters, and if not, whether there's any plan to do so.
Thanks. So there is recording of it, absolutely. The first point about improvements in productivity, for some, I'm sure it's not been for everyone, but we, our major concern at the beginning, in February, March, was going to be a drop in productivity across the entire economy. That has not proven to be the case. People who want to do, get on with things certainly have. Some, as I said, there's been a fairly sizable cohort have said, we like these arrangements and we are actually delivering on what we said we would because, as I said, 85% to 90% of the economy is the private sector, we're about 10% of the employees in the public sector. So it's measurable. The forms of measurement will need to improve. At the moment, lots of anecdotes through poll surveys, public and private sector, the results of private companies will become very clear because their end-of-year results will tell you how they've gone through this and it won't just be through the economic downturn, the productivity of the employees will be known as well. So we will get better tools to measure. It's probably one of the number-one things out of Public Service Commission and Employee Relations to actually measure. We measure with behavioural insights and as much science as we can about engagement through specific questions, are you engaged with your workforce? And that should lead to better productivity and therefore better community outcome. The measurables, the hard, quantifiable measurables, you can do, you can do online as well, just about people's engagement, about how, you know, what I'm actually doing online. Some agencies and businesses are doing more of that, but it's fledgling sort of at this point in time, but that will be probably the number-one focus of attention because the entire Australian economy will rely on us for the next period up to a vaccine and possibly longer if it works out to be a new normal, that these are our work arrangements. I imagine that the examination of that productivity will be the number-one issue for nearly the nation, but certainly for the state and certainly for the public service in New South Wales because I want us to be measured exactly the same as the private sector.
But you said, I think, earlier, you had some initial, small studies.
Yeah, so mainly poll surveys.
What do they indicate? What sort of percentage improvement?
Productivity, they won't go down to, did we get, you know, 0.3 or 1% productivity, not at that level yet. I mean, you've, people have just been through a sort of a shock and awe and then the next thing, we're putting surveys in front of them, so, you know, we're just trying to measure that as best we can. So the first ones have been more anecdotal, like, how do you feel, how's it going, what's optimal work arrangements, have you actually got yourself up and running, have we had business continuity? Then we've moved to, has this impacted on you delivering on your performance agreement, deliverables, your business plan, your contribution to agency output, measuring that, but the more hard, quantifiable measures, the whole world will be looking to assist with that, it won't be just Premier Cabinet or the New South Wales Public Service. It'll be a significant item for both the New South Wales and the Australian productivity commissions.
So I know that the government is currently in the IRC at the moment, dealing with, I think, three, well, 43 awards that I think cover a majority of the state public sector workforce, and the contention, I guess, is between the government's proposal for a 0% pay increase, the pay freeze, I think, as it's described, and the unions, of course, have their own case. Given the ruling by the Fair Work Commission to increase minimum wages by 1.75% on the 19th of June, is there any reconsideration within government about the 0% increase in pay that is proposing in the proceedings?
So, Mr. Seale, on this, I'm Industrial Relations Secretary, I have certain accountabilities under, you know, the Government Sector Employment Act, which I could read out to you and I'm happy to furnish to you about my role, about overarching...
Just asking if the government's going to change the position?
I understand your question, wages policy. The Industrial Relations Commission has a hearing on foot that you've pointed to. I request that I'm not asked questions around the issue of the Industrial Relations Commission, any matter that is related to fair work that could have a bearing on that. You've asked me a question about, is the government reconsidering its position because of that? I can take it on notice, but I would respectfully ask that I, it's before the commission, and you could ask me lots of questions about it, but...
I'll ask you one further question about...
Well, just let him finish his answer before you. I know.
It's such, it's a significant matter, and we know it's a significant matter, and I would rather that, you know, the Industrial Relations Commission can do its work. The positions are named from employer and the, you know, the employee representatives and, you know, it's a proceeding.
Can I ask you this question? Is the government intending on leading evidence from any qualified economist in those proceedings?
Do not answer that. Don't even go there.
The government intending on leading evidence from any qualified economists?
As a practising member of the bar, you know that's out of order.
In that proceeding, I'm not asking about what the evidence would be, that is the government intending on leading evidence.
I'll only repeat, and I don't mean to frustrate, but I'll only repeat my answer. I just do, I do not think it appropriate to ask questions about the Industrial Relations Commission. If it wasn't on at the moment, as I said, I can outline my role.
I'm not asking for the details of what that evidence might be.
You've asked me about who might represent.
Whether any qualified economist will give evidence for the government.
I'll only repeat my response.
Well, I'll take that as a no, Mr. Redden.
No.
I don't think you can.
He cannot answer it on notice. No, he was entitled to answer it in the way he has, but I'm entitled to draw it in for you.
I'm just going to intervene here. I think the witness has given an answer. What you may wish to take from it is the...
I'm giving him an opportunity.
No, no, just specifically, what you may wish to take from it is a matter for you, but I don't think we can put words into the mouth of a witness in that way.
So you're declining to give a...
Well, I'll take the point of order at this stage. The matter's been dealt with.
Well, it was a different matter.
Fair go, Adam. The matter's been dealt with, the witness has now essentially answered the question twice, I'll let him get, that sorts that out.
Well, I think, I think it has been addressed earlier.
I understand you're interrupting someone else's...
I've still got a bit more time.
But I can indicate, I have just a few, very few short questions of you, Ms. Foy, and then if there was something that wasn't dealt with by Mr. Seale of a productive nature, I'm happy to give a bit of my time to Mr. Seale. Ms. Foy, you indicated that there have been, sorry, can I just understand what the application process is for the $50 million cultural and arts grants?
That's all set out online through the Create website, so for companies to be able to easily make an application.
And what's the closing date for that?
Look, I'd have to take that on notice, I don't think we've put a specific closing date in there because we know these are, the early days... Uh, look, I'd have to take that on notice. I don't think we've put a specific closing date in there because we know these are, the, 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 the early days for getting the applications in and as we're working them through, I don't believe there's a closing date, but I'm, I'm very happy to...
As a general principle, some of these economic supports across the board have had a date when the actual economic support ran out, but the actual dates of when you could apply is almost continuous up to that point for small business and a whole range of other areas. That is meant that people have come forward in their tens of thousands for support.
Yeah. So, that's my, that goes to my next question. Ms. Foy, do you know how many organisations have sought support to date?
To date, my, as at yesterday, fifty-five companies have made an application.
All right. And does that, do you have any data about the, the number of inquiries that have been made as opposed to formal applications?
I don't have data of the inquiries.
But as at yesterday, fifty-five?
Real applications that we're dealing with at the moment and working our way through, in line with the process that I outlined with Create, PwC and Treasury and the, the criteria around eligibility.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Foy. That, well, that concludes my questions and this... No, I've got a few more. In relation to...
Do you want their weakness list?
No, no. A, a number of answers. This would be most productive if there were less interjections. Uh, I have noted the Chair's ruling, so I'll ask these questions. Mr. Redden, in a number of answers you've given, they've obviously related to the state public sector, which of course is the primary con, or the concern of the, the industrial relations system with New South Wales. But Mr. Shubridge, you did ask you some question about whether or not forms of assistance for private sector workers who were not otherwise receiving benefits or assistance from the federal government had been contemplated. I think your answer was, was no.
Not that you're aware of.
Not that you're aware of. So, could I ask, in relation to, for example, gig workers who in most cases are not termed to be employees and therefore at least arguably are not currently regulated by anyone, has any thought been given at a policy level within the New South Wales Government about whether or not forms of financial assistance could be or should be extended to gig workers, you know?
Same with the Chair. I'll, I'll take it on notice. Yeah, I think the general questions were around, you know, public sector employees, private sector, full-time employees, contractors, then casuals, gig workers. I think it's similar essence of question. We'll, we'll take it on notice.
Okay, that's fine. And in relation to extended hours worked, was it your evidence that any increases in hours worked by public sector workers during the pandemic period wasn't systematically being recorded by agencies?
It may be in certain places. It's just that, that is a very, very large question in terms of how, how to even report.
Sure, I understand that, but is that the sort of...
I can, I can tell you that as a general principle, because the, the shutdown meant we narrowed down to more essential services, we ran our essential services throughout. A lot of people in a crisis have to, have to, have to work quite considerably. Because of people working flexibly, a lot more people at home, and as I said, somewhat of a blurring of their work and, and life. Very difficult to measure what that new normal is. And I think out of that, we'll examine what it means, you know, in the months and probably years ahead, what that new normal looks like in a whole range of, in a whole range of ways.
Okay. But do you accept that it's reasonably important to get a hand, given particularly if people are not working in the same workplace and there's not the same sort of visibility about...
You, you refer to present, oh, sorry, my apologies.
I was going to say, the, the observational capacity is, I guess, reduced, that it, it's important to get a sense of the sort of how many hours people are working to see whether...
Mr. Seale, we're about outcomes and presenteeism is very much becoming, I'm responding. Presenteeism and having to eyeball someone to trust and give them permission to do their job, we're trying to move away from as fast as possible. When I say we, the entire economy. People will deliver on outcomes or they won't and they'll be performance managed to deliver on outcomes or they won't. Having to actually stare at employees within a opto office tower or in a bus depot or anywhere else is somewhat departing the scene. If you're going to truly trust and permission people to work flexibly across the board, to do their job, care for their kids, pick them up, care for aged care, whether it's a woman or a man, presenteeism is yesterday's sort of proposition in a workplace, you know, contemporary workplace.
You're not going to create a digital panopticon? You're not going to create a digital panopticon where you're constantly observing workers? That's not on the agenda.
I'm not even sure if I know what that word means.
Panopticon is, is the... Well, no, that, that's the whole concept of having people permanently under observation and it was a very industrial, industrial revolution concept.
No, is the answer. We will look for people to deliver on outcomes.
Yeah. Mr. Redden, I, I couldn't agree more and maybe you've misunderstood the flavour of my question. The information I have had is that public sector workers working from home in the pandemic have actually had significant increases in the workload that they have been discharging. And so, I'm interested to understand whether or not there has been that significant extending of the work week for those workers.
I think it would, yeah. I think it would fluctuate all over the place, quite frankly, and where people have actually had their area of work just could not be undertaken because they might work in a stadium. They could work in the Sydney Opera House and there is actually no work. Try to redeploy them as much as possible. There have been some people, as I said, when particularly we had those couple of months of schoolchildren at home, that was a heavy workload and I mean, life workload and, and work as well. But it'll, it'll sort of settle down and be less volatile over time. We do need to measure. It was the first thing I said to Mr. Graham. We need to measure that sort of almost monthly to work out what that new normal is, it sort of settles down. We don't want to waste the opportunity. We think it's a massive opportunity. We think the things that people have really disliked for a long, long time in their workplaces, we'll try and get those right. As an employer, the things that we need to ensure productivity and we deliver on outcomes for the community are done as well and there's a balance there to be had. But you're correct in terms of the Public Service Commission and Employee Relations, measuring that with the chief people officers from across all of the clusters, they're very energised in what's happening. They want to know that we get this right on the far side of this. So, we don't just revert back to what we thought was best, best practice and that will require ongoing measurement. If there's any views on how that needs to be measured, we're all ears because we won't have a monopoly on good ideas. We are simply surveying our people as much as possible, sharing stories with private sectors as well to do that and other jurisdictions to see what they're doing. And we will all learn as we go. We just need to make sure that we actually pick up all the data points as we go along.
Mr. Redden, are you going, do you have a, a commitment to sit down with the major public sector unions, the PSA and others, to work out how best to measure, to come up with an agreed way of measuring these kind of impacts? In terms of, you know, the stress of working from home, the productivity and, and the hours of work?
So, again, I'll, I'll repeat what I said before about Industrial Relations Commission, anything on there at the moment, just so we're super clear about...
So, I'm not talking about the wage case I'm talking about.
Um, for unions, New South Wales, there is always an open offer to discuss such matters.
All right.
Yep. And it's been made recently.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that'll do.
Yes, well, it is my time, so I was going to indicate till two o'clock. I'm a moderator, I think.
Chair, I had a couple of things. I took notice. I could tidy up if you wish to. So, first thing was just on the administrative arrangements, Administration of Acts Amendment Number Three, Order two thousand and twenty. On the fifteenth of April, the Premier took on Aboriginal Affairs, Arts, Public Service and Employee Relations, as I indicated. But I just wanted to add for completeness, the Attorney General has been allocated responsibility for acts associated with the Special Minister of State Portfolio. I was asked a question about flexible work and working from home. The public health order, the relevant public health order requires people to work from home if reasonably practical and that remains in place right now. And the other was, Mr. Graham asked us about the, the governance for nighttime economy. A multi-agency steering committee of senior representatives was established to support the New South Wales Government's consideration of the city's nighttime economy report. Minister Ears is the accountable minister, supported by Treasury, for implementation of the review and review of the New South Wales Government's response to the community's recommendations, including the development of a twenty-four-hour economy strategy. The Minister has established an industry advisory group to inform the development of the strategy. Suggestions include city of Sydney, leading hoteliers, live music industry reps, representatives, restaurant and catering representatives and harm minimisation organisations. Sorry, that's awful.
And my only point of clarification is to, I, I can confirm there is no specific closing date on the, the arts package, the arts support package.
Thanks, Ms. Foy. Thanks, Mr. Redden. Ms. Ward?
Thank you, Chair. For your indulgence, I just wanted to take the opportunity, I don't want to take up any more of your time, but I do want, I think it's important to thank you for not only coming along today, but for your management of this crisis, but to reiterate your words and ask that you convey them also on our behalf, or at least my behalf, I don't want to speak on behalf of the committee. But you referred to the dedication, the hard work and the resilience of the entire public service. And I just wanted to, if I need to pose a question, ask you to elaborate on that, but from our perspective, echo that and thank them and you for your ongoing work. I'm sure when you envisaged the year ahead and thought about challenges, this may not have been in the list. So, it's been an extraordinary challenge, I'm sure, and, but the response of the public service has been incredible. So, I just wanted, if there's anything further you wanted to add to that.
Simply to say that, thank you. And, you know, New South Wales Public Service is full of proud and passionate people and times like this in the last twelve months is only showing that it's drawn it out in people, how they've responded to the crisis. They haven't blinked. They haven't missed a beat. They've continued to deliver the services that is in their mission statement to deliver, whether it's health, transport, stronger communities. All of them have stood up and probably truly showed the community what essential services are through a period like this. And incredibly proud to be part of them, to work with them, not just to be the, the head of the public service, to actually work with them. So, thank you for your comment.
And if I could say, I've had a couple of decades in the public sector. Never have I been more proud to be a public servant and never have I been more proud to work with the people that I do in DPC, community engagement and across the government. There's been some really heavy lifting on some very difficult issues, whether it's working with Aboriginal communities in regional New South Wales and metropolitan New South Wales, whether it's working with the arts sector, who've been so heavily hit and so gracious in working with us, whether it's working with the, our employees and the Public Sector Commissioner, it's a, it's a great honour and welcome the opportunity to talk about the fantastic work our people do. So, thank you.
I'm sure when you go for that job interview and they say, describe an example of when you dealt with a challenge in your past role, is this thing called COVID? Thank you.
Thank you.
Where do you want to be in five years? Ms. Foy, Mr. Redden, thank you very much for your engagement today. There have been a number of questions taken on notice. The timeframe is twenty-one days, but Mr. Redden, you indicated there were a number of subsets of questions where you may need to seek additional time. Please do notify the secretariat and we'll arrange for that to be provided.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you again. That concludes today.